No, I don't think it's not. Andrew's not.
Oh, well. No, he's not coming.
No.
He's here tonight.
Patrick's got a little more helpless face.
Hmm, not the same.
This meeting is.
Okay, whatever you're ready. About what, 30 seconds or so?
Minutes.
Right in the corner.
Minutes.
Oh, okay.
I could pause, but it's okay. He entered.
Fifty-eight, right?
Yeah, mine, my watch.
Kind of monitor.
Made me believe I was a minute ahead.
Yes, you need to monitor like this.
What does it do?
It's easier to see, easier to see.
The other one's behind you as opposed to sitting in front of you, so.
You talk or you move. Watch my hand. It kind of messes with you if you try and watch it.
Did you watch this?
So it'd be like one of those. We can move each other. Oh, Godzilla movies. Where the guy keeps walking and you wouldn't even get the mic. Hear the words.
Somebody else surprised I didn't get another letter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call to order this meeting of the town council, and I'll ask if there are any announcements that need to be made. Seeing none, the next item of business is approval of the minutes of January, oh, sorry, February 9th.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 9th, unless someone wants to make a comment.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an abstain since I wasn't here.
It took me a second to figure that out.
The vote then is three in favor with one abstention. All business, a letter of invitation to consult has been received from the Department of the Interior Bureau of Office, Bureau of Ocean Energy regarding the Revolution Wind Farm and Revolution Wind Export Cable Project. Based upon this letter and its statement in this final paragraph, "If you're an individual or represent an organization with a demonstrable interest in the project as it relates to historic properties and would like to inquire, et cetera, et cetera." "I've also looked at the package of information that is available to us online, and given that a number of our town properties are specifically called out as being historically impact, I would seek a motion that we request to be considered a interested party."
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. It is a discussion. All in favor?
You know, we've, we've had that, this before. Anybody, this isn't like the Mayflower Wind Project. It goes up, goes into quonset. It stays pretty much away from Little Compton. It's a kind of point. It is for historical, historical structures, but, I mean, I'll go along with the motion. It's not a problem with that, but I don't see how it affects us.
But I'd be. I would agree. I don't, I don't see on its face that it does, but given the sensitivity we have had toward these kinds of projects, I think we want to raise our hand and say, send this information. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries 4-0. The next item is to receive proposals for the reconstruction of the wellhead enclosure located at Town Landing. We have none. Would there be a motion to remand this issue back to the group that is under the direction of the town administrator to come forward with another proposal?
So, second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. The next item is a copy of communication sent by Sheila McIntosh to the council, Senator De Palma and Representative McGaw, expressing her concerns regarding safety of pedestrians on the commons as it relates to the upcoming reconstruction by Rideot. Is Ms. McIntosh here?
I know.
In summation of her submittal, it's a, it closes with, "It's my hope that the efforts will be made to ease the risk to all users of the roads meeting in the commons, and I'm looking forward to the Rideot March meeting and the discussion of the work to be done to make this highly trafficked area safer for all." I would say that is one of the things that we want to bring to the fore in that discussion. And I don't remember when that administrator, when that meeting is to be.
I believe it's going to be the second meeting in March.
Second March meeting.
Yes.
Expect DOT to come and brief us on the meeting house project generally.
That is correct.
Which would include the commons, and therefore that would be a time where we're able to make this, have this discussion.
She's submitted this to the state as well?
It went to Senator De Palma and to Representative McGaw.
All right, so as long as they get a copy, I'll make a motion. We place on file for now.
That's fine.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to place this matter on file.
Just quickly, so we're talking March 23rd?
That is correct, yes.
Do we have a name of this person that's coming?
It will.
Persons?
Persons, yes.
What are they?
Most likely it will be at least three people. John Fontana and, hey, can I read all the?
The persons who briefed us last?
Yes, that's correct. It will be the same folks who will be returning.
And what are we expecting that will be different from when they briefed us last time?
Last time they were at 30% engineering. This time they'll be at 60%, plus they'll be, be able to answer and provide additional information as well regarding the, the project that we partner, partnering with them, you know, as well as additional questions. To your point, this, I have forward this information to Rideot to be aware of this communication.
Once a copy of this makes it to the meeting, that's what my concern was.
Yes. So they'll be able to tell us the, the mystery of what curbing we're going to get? We can guarantee that on the 23rd?
Oh, you said mystery. I don't think, I think it's pretty straightforward. It's going to be.
Granite curbing?
Granite curbing, yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item of business is a memo from the town administrator offering the results of a review of three bid proposals for solar panel installation on municipal buildings, noting a final selection that will be contingent upon an independent review of the proposals by a qualified party. Let me say that this has been an example of a great team effort. There've been a number of people involved in this under the enthusiastic leadership of Jim Locke, who I think is here with us, is here with us. And this proposal needs this independent review in order for us to move forward. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yes, it is. I know, I don't think he, he's getting, yeah, that's correct. And Jim has provided me actually a name of an individual that may be able to assist us, Bill Ferguson.
Okay.
On the surface from the review of the panel, it looks like Newport Renewables is the, the one we would tend to go with upon a review from a certified individual.
I, did I, they're not in the packet, the, what they sent us here. Do we have the numbers for that? The three?
We do have. I did not even. Yes, we do have them. Jim may have. Jim, yes.
It's not a simple one number.
Yeah.
No, I'm happy to have it not be simple. I'll pass it down to you.
I think I brought one for everybody. Assuming some level of interest.
Is that the same one you gave us at the?
Exactly.
Okay.
You saw it. Thank you.
Not really apples to apples. Apples, oranges, bananas, all sorts of fruit mixed together to figure this out.
I'm, I'm all ears.
Jim, go ahead, Jim. You may weigh in on that, that you just passed out.
So the first sheet that you see in your packet has made an attempt to compare the three different bids from a financial standpoint. I think the most important number, there's two numbers there. The first number is going to be the number, the cost, the capital cost from each of the three different bidders for the three different sites, the school, the town hall, and the.
Public safety.
Public safety complex. The second, the last column on the, what I did is that I created an equal formula for incentives and rebates for all three companies. Because the rebates and incentives that were included were a little bit different from the three companies, and I made the assumption that all three company bids would wind up having the same ability to get rebates and money back. So the column on the right, the last column on the right, lists the capital cost per megawatt hours generated from the three different sites, and then the capital cost per megawatt hour for all three different companies. You'll notice that Soul Power is the cheapest. Newport Renewables is the second cheapest, and Rise Engineering, which is actually a different company, is the most expensive. So from a strictly value standpoint, dollars per electricity generated per year, Soul Power is slightly cheaper than the other two. You'll also notice that there are a number of different, and I included this also for discussion points. It turns out that the town, when the town has signed this contract with a company in Warren, we're sort of required to buy 360 watts, megawatt hours a year. The town uses about 510. So there's an extra, so we're, we're required to buy 360 megawatt hours. The town is using 510. That number's going to go up as people add splitters and stuff. So anything over the highest amount actually doesn't help the town very much, although I must say, in retrospect, the contract with Warren is going to turn out to be quite a good thing for this community. Really quite a good thing for the community. So these are the discussion points that we included in the, in the, in the meeting when we considered these three different things. You've already seen this, but I'll give it to you anyway. And I'm going to keep it for now. Soul Power is the least expensive in total and the least expensive per unit of energy generated and the smallest amount of power generated, but since we have the Warren agreement, extra power generated requires some activity on the part of the town, and I can go into that later. Soul Power has not been used to providing us a performance bond, and they didn't include a performance bond in the proposal that we saw. And I have a copy of those proposals in case anybody wants to see it. There was a very strong feeling on the part of the committee, which is new to me because I don't do this for a living, that the town really would want a performance bond in order to make sure that the, the work was done on time and on budget. They do have a positive experience in town, but this is significantly larger than anything that they have done in the past, best I can tell. And as far as I can tell, they're probably not as sophisticated with the incentives associated with this project because one of the incentives that they included as part of their financial consideration, I'm pretty sure doesn't apply to the town. It's a tax credit, on, on real estate tax, and we don't pay taxes. Newport Renewables was middle expenses in total and per, but it's actually the most efficient as far as energy produced per unit of capacity. And that's an interesting problem. If you stick solar panels on the north side, you're going to not generate as much power per, per panel. So, so Newport Renewables was the most efficient. They had a little more power than Soul Power. Certainly enough, they already, they provided an example of a performance bond, and they are clearly have experience with projects of this size. And they're probably sophisticated, best I can tell, they're very sophisticated with the incentives involved. Rise Engineering was the most expensive in total and per energy unit. They were the least efficient. They probably provided more power in their proposal than the town would need. There was no performance bond offered. This is significantly larger than any project that they listed in your experience. This is more than twice as big as anything that they told us about. And I'm not 100% sure that their photo, their array met the fire code standards for commercial buildings, which the fire chief thought was actually pretty poor. So based on this consideration, I think the chairman of the committee, Paul, made the strong case that we should go with Newport Renewables as our first choice. Soul Power is our second. Is that right, Paul?
Hmm, yep. Yes, indeed.
Happy to answer any question.
That was Newport Renewables, Paul, that you thought would go, would be the best. They're the cheapest, that's obvious, but.
Newport Renewables, if you, if you, it's hard because some, some of the incentives that we're offering, some of them were tax incentives, which we don't need because we don't pay taxes on property like Jim was talking about. Newport Renewables reached, reached farther with putting out a performance bond for us. They're, the project that they scoped out for us and the ones they showed us in their packages that they've already accomplished, this would be not necessarily a smaller, but not as, nowhere near as big as some of the big ones have already accomplished. So that's why we, that was the other thing in the experience of the project. And they actually were closer in capacity for what we wanted than the others.
So just getting this in front of me right now, obviously I've been away and I wasn't part of the committee, but looking at the expense, Newport Renewables is the cheapest. And on these six bullets, it seems like they're going to come in much better than Soul Power and Rise, so.
And Rise.
If that's what you're looking for, Newport Renewables, then I think that's.
And Rise isn't really Rise. Rise is Rhode Island Saving Energy. They sub it out to other contractors. So you don't know who you're going to end up with unless they got awarded the project.
Well, they sub it out to Thielsh Engineering. I'm not sure I'm providing that pronunciation correctly.
But, but all in all, the balance and the best bang for the buck was Newport Reliables. That's the bottom line.
I just question, a question is the capital money after incentives. Can you just define that for me?
So let's, let's just, let's go with the Newport Renewables number, all right? Their capital number is 856. There, right off the top, the federal government, under the Inflation Reduction Act, takes 30% off that number.
When they say they take it off, they pay?
They pay the town a check. Okay, a check comes from the town, from the federal government to the town.
30% of the 856?
30% of the 856. Now, the second biggest one is from the Renewable Energy Fund of the State of Rhode Island. Now, this one's a little more complicated, and I have the numbers in the back. I can find them for you. But the amount of money you get from the state depends on the size of the, each of the contracts. The town is going to wind up sending, signing three different contracts. One for the school, one for the town hall, and one for the safety complex. The school is, has an enormous amount of energy use and an enormous amount of surface area to put stuff on. The town and that surface area will exceed the cap for any contract for, and that's 75,000. So the, the school will get $75,000 back on top of the 30, from the state, on top of the 30% that the federal government provides, okay? The, the safety complex will get less than that. I, I can't remember whether it's 40 or 35, 35,000. And that, but the percentage that the, that the town hall and the safety complex get is actually more than the school gets because the school's taxed. And the formula provides more of an incentive for small projects, a little bit less for bigger projects, a little bit less for bigger projects until you hit the $75,000 max.
So the federal government's going to give us a 30% of the 856,000?
That's right.
School's going to get 75,000, and the safety complex is going to get 35,000.
Something like that.
Is that 35,000 from Rhode Island also?
Yes.
DOE, yeah.
Okay. So I guess the, the real question is, I've been involved in some of this, being at the school. We have to usually pay for this first, and then we wait for the checks to come in. Is this how this is going to work?
I believe so, okay? I think that that's correct. I've tried to look into it, and I'm not sure that that's right, Pat, but I think that that's right.
So we would have to.
So the stroke would have to be 850, and then you get the money back.
We would have to have a stroke on the budget for 856,000.
That's what I think. That, that's my, that's what I think is, and we talked about this in the committee, and that's what, and Paul thought that was the most reasonable thing to do. Now, the other thing I would add is that John McNamee is convinced that the school is eligible for another 110,000 on top of this.
You're laughing. He's always, he's always.
I just want to know what they're going to do with that money. That's not my problem. I'm not here to discuss what you guys.
That's not what I was. That's stereotypical. He's getting another 100,000.
But I, when I did my solar field, it was 762,000, and I had to take a loan for the full amount. But in the, in the loan documents, it was any, any grants or any money that comes in has to go right on the loan.
Right.
So it just basically, I, I didn't even get to touch it. It just passed right through and right, right to the, right back to the solar company. And I believe this is the same kind of arrangement. I think the.
I'm pretty sure that that can be set up that way. I think that that's right, but as you know, I'm new to this. I didn't do energy for a living.
I think I'd be more comfortable.
You've done a phenomenal job on this one, though.
I'd be more comfortable knowing, you know, you know, when we're getting the rebates and making sure we're getting them when they're coming. Are you going to go for any grants?
I looked into that. It turns out that the probably, the only grant that I could look fine, Patrick, would probably be worth about 7,000 bucks for the town. Now, that's not nothing.
I don't know.
But you could probably get 7,000 bucks from the federal government second grant that goes to communities in the state of Rhode Island.
I don't know if you've looked at the IIJA, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act.
I know.
I don't know if this would qualify, but they have a low-income energy assistance program. I don't know if that's $500 million in there.
I looked at that.
And there's a, there's one for the.
But that's for the, that's for the whole country.
Right, and then you have a new.
So the state of Rhode Island, right, out of the whole country, the state of Rhode Island would get, you know, 25,000, 25 million. And you look at the population of Little Compton, that's where I back calculated the 7,000.
And they also, in the, in the IIJA, new solar research and development is 20 million. And the applications of the second quarter of 2023, we missed one for 40 million. It was the third quarter of 2022. Have you seen that one?
No. But you've made a very good point, and I, one of the reasons I've tried relatively hard to move this along quickly is that the Rhode Island Energy Fund applications have three different time spans.
Right.
Three, one's in March, one's in July, and one's in October. And one of the companies said that the October application date ran out of money last year or two years ago. So there would be some non-significant incentive for the town to try to get into the March or the July application window.
What will be the significance of the independent review? In other words, what, what questions will it answer that we haven't, that we haven't answered yet?
I recognize that I should have come up with that list of questions, but I thought I would wait until after this committee met before I tried to do that.
Okay.
But I, I'm, personally, I'm looking for a smell test. I'll be, I think the chances that somebody is going to spend as much time on this as we did, Tony and Paul and I, is relatively small. So I think what they're really going to ask for is the reputation of the company. I think that's the most important thing, to make sure that we're not dealing with, you know, some fly-by-note organization. But I'm making that up.
On this, on this sheet you gave us, the first one where it says return on investment, I don't see one for Newport Renewables, return on investment in the first year. I see one for Rise Engineering and one for Soul Power. Did you ever calculate that for Newport Renewables?
If you, if you look at the very back, it depends a little bit, but if you look at the very back of the Newport Renewables, my guess is that it's going to be at least 15%.
Okay.
It's at least 15%.
Okay.
But that depends on whether or not the town gets the money from the school.
The reason for the professional review is just to make sure that we didn't make any assumptions that were incorrect, that, you know, figuring the kilowatt hours or figuring the.
Newport Renewables has calculated that the cost, so just to put things in perspective, they've calculated that the cost of electricity per kilowatt hour is going to be about four and a half cents if you amortize the 450 over 25 years. Right now, we're paying 21 cents. If you, and Newport Renewables did not include the 100,000 from the school, so that would, that number would drop to under three cents per kilowatt hour if it's true. So, so the, the project would probably, I think the project would pay itself off in six years at most, probably four or five.
Would, would this stroke, would this be coming out of the unrestricted general fund balance? Is that where it would be directed?
Would this stroke, say that again, would it come out of the unrestricted?
Yeah, where, where was the money? What, what line is the money going to come from, the 856?
It'd be a new, it would be a new line.
Never.
It doesn't exist. Right. Right.
Well, I'll make the motion to allow the committee to go forward and get an independent review of this project so that we're all on the same page and that we're not missing anything because I don't want to spend that money and have something come back and say, well, how come you didn't do this? So that'd be my motion.
I'll second your motion. The professional review, is the committee going to pick this firm or person?
We have, well, Jim picked, provided a recommendation, Bill Ferguson. He's Ferguson Energy Management Professionals, and he's been very involved. He was at the manager of energies with Rise. He was a deputy commissioner with the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources. So associate director of facilities and management with the department, the Rhode Island Department of Administration. So I.
More importantly, he, turns out that he's been overseeing the effort of the city of Newton in Massachusetts to put solar on their, on their town.
Buildings.
On their town buildings.
So he's, he's a, at least a frontrunner in our search for the right person to do this review.
I mean, I.
Obviously, if there's anybody else that the committee can think of.
Right. Well, that motion accommodates that, I think.
If I may, I also reached out to Power Options, which is the, the group that has provided advice to us, that provide the advice for the remote, remote solar, the contract that we have in place already. However, they were, they saw a conflict because of the involvement. However, they were, they saw a conflict because of the involvement. So they opt out. Otherwise, they would have been really the primary source of consulting.
Any further discussion on the motion? Yes?
Can I just ask sort of a, I've heard about return on investment, cost per kilowatt hour. Sort of dumb question I have to ask is, the point of doing this, besides there's a environment impact, is that going forward, this is going to save, this is going to direct a medium impact once these things are running on the town's cost of the business?
Probably 60,000 a year. Town will save about 60,000. It depends on how you slice the apple. Right now, the town is spending 105,000 a year?
109.
109 on energy. So this will drop it into the $30,000 range.
Electricity.
On electric, just on electricity. That's right. So the, so 400,000 will generate at least $60,000 a year in return on investment.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks for the work and thanks to the committee.
Listen, thanks to Paul and to Tony. They did a terrific job. I'll just keep plugging ahead here.
If you would leave your call card, I'm glad to sign it off at a certain level.
I, I, that's right. I told Tony, he and I, I was going to save, I was going to share half of my consulting fee with Tony. I think amounts to a beer and a half.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to new business. New business one is a request from Amy Mooney, the director of the Little Compton Community Center, who is with us this evening, to request the council to consider adding budget funding to be used to help support the senior meal program in the amount of $6,200.
I'm happy to make the motion.
I'll second that motion. I think it's a good project. The community center seems, from what Amy says, is gaining participation. It's benefit of seniors, seniors for, uh, to allow them to get to eat, but it's also a social event. So any way we can help seniors, I think it's a good idea for this council.
So if I might ask if the motion could be framed that it will be added to the proposed budget at this value so as to be considered on, at our workshop, our budget workshop in that context? Or are you, are you building a wall around it saying this particular item is not, is not?
I'll make a motion that it goes to our budget workshop on the 27th for consideration.
I'll amend my motion.
So then the motion, if I could frame it, is that the council approves a, a placement of $6,200 in the, in the budget for the Little Compton Community Center and will evaluate it at the, at the workshop on Monday evening. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Great. Thank you. Thank you for the, for the suggestion. Next is to receive letters of interest for the unexpired term of a trustee on the Little Compton Housing Trust.
I have received a couple more since I made your packet. So there are technically three. I have one from Peter Rowley, one from Lucy Duhamel, and one from Miles Arkins, as was, as well as a letter of support that came in electronically from Ellen Cunnane supporting Peter Rowley.
None of these are incumbents. These are all.
No.
No, they're not incumbents. But we, have we not interviewed Mr. Rowley?
Uh, years ago, maybe. It's not recently.
No, I don't think it was for the trustee. About, what was the last name, Carol? Rowley.
Peter Rowley.
Right, right. Lucy Duhamel.
Lucy Duhamel and Miles Arkins.
A motion to interview the candidates for the housing trust. Now, set a date for it.
First meeting of, uh, March.
First meeting in March. Do it ahead of it. Say 6:15, 6:30?
6:15, it'd be fine.
You think 6:15 would work?
Yeah.
My motion is to interview the three candidates for the housing trust on the first meeting in March at 6:15, starting at 6:15.
Second.
Discussion on that.
Yes, before you go too much farther, if you read the letter from Mr. Rowley, you'll see that he's out of town through the middle of March. He won't be back, but for the first meeting.
What, do the second meeting in March then?
That's up to you.
He'll be back for it instead of doing it in abstention. I'll amend my motions to the second meeting in March then.
I'll amend my second.
The motion is made and seconded to interview three candidates for the housing trust at 6:15 on the 23rd of March. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next is a request from the Little Compton Game Club for assistance regarding outstanding tangible tax notice from tax year 2013, even though they have been certified by the IRS as a public charity as a 501(c)(3) since December of 2011.
Can I ask the assessor to explain this to me? Because, and the letter I'm reading, they had, uh, voted to exempt the club for years 2012, 13, 2014. So can we give them abatement on this?
No.
Okay, can you explain why we can't?
Rhode Island law states that just because they're a 501(c)(3), they are not exempt from taxes.
But they haven't been paying taxes, have they?
Well, it was brought before the town council a few times. And for them to apply to the legislation to have a ratification or amend the law so that they wouldn't have to pay, just like any other.
Have they been, did they pay last year taxes?
No, because in 2012, 15, and 18, the assessors made a letter to the town council asking, because they had not been paying, to omit from paying until we view, you know, further detail. Because prior to that, they were doing educational, seven hours in sessions for students, for young people. And they were giving lectures, and they were doing that. So according to state law, I cannot exempt them from taxation.
Might I say something?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think that's entirely true. They have kept up with their programs and they file annually. They stack it with the town council that shows the grants that they give locally and the programs that they do.
That's not, that's not how it is. And the state law specifically says that they have to do, provide educational, um, sessions or, just because they're a 501(c)(3), they cannot be.
I'm not arguing you with that point. I'm just saying that they have provided what the council had said they needed to provide to the council to show that they were continuing to do what the council back in 2018 agreed to.
Right. But that was just, that was just so that they could apply to the legislation so that they could be exempt from taxation. The council cannot grant them exemption from taxation until they ask the legislation to do that.
That was in none of the discussions when they came before the council at that time.
It was, it was.
So can the council override the 66176 by vote?
No.
Is that the amount?
Yeah.
That's with interest. So it would be 300 and change with, without the interest.
And is it clear what the assistance they're requesting is? I would like to, uh, sorry. Asking for your assistance.
That's it. They didn't ask what.
Regarding the attached outstanding tangible tax notice. So it seems to me that we ought to off, not in a council meeting, but we ought to clarify what it is that is required by law and what it is that they have provided and give them the assistance that they need in order to do something like that.
Well, yeah, we, we need to have the history, although I think Carol has a history quite, quite precise. So, so we're talking about $300 plus. So the council, according to Denise, said in 2018, I don't recall this, and I'll have to look at the, maybe Carol hasn't, said, uh, we got to continue to provide benefits to the community.
Something on that order.
Right. So I have a.
Do you want the vote?
Yeah, thank you.
That's two separate years and two separate votes, but.
So the vote says that motion made by Council Vinington, receiving second by Council Mataronis, voting in favor, Appleton, Vinington, Mataronis, Mushon, Council Golden, abstained, that the recommendation of Board of Tax Assessors for the cancellation of the following taxes under section 44-7-14 of the General Order is amended. And they were, they gave them, uh, town council vote. So that's what they did. They, they abated it.
They exempted them. It said, it said local exemption if the, if you read the vote above.
Oh, I see the vote, the vote above. Excuse me, let me. Same, same counselors with Paul recusing himself. To adopt the recommendation of the Board of Tax Assessors to grant local real estate tax exemption to the Little Compton Game Club for the next three years, 2014, 2015, and 2016. And at the end of this period, the exemption status of the club should be reviewed to determine the actual financial results with particular notice of community contributions. I think Carol's indicated that they have done some community contributions.
Well, at the time, they were also asked to annually file a report, a copy of their, I can't, 10, 10?
990, 499.
990, maybe. It's, it's whatever their annual filing number is. And a copy of what they've actually given for donations, charitable donations and education efforts. And they do file that every year.
So it would seem to be sort of simple as to, if you're getting significant contributions to the town and the cost of that would be granting the exemption, perhaps the council should consider granting the exemption.
Right. I, I agree with you.
Thank you, Carol, for doing that.
I think that's the direction we'd like to go. I, I was not aware that we didn't have or there was some debate over whether we had received anything. So what they're asking for is our assistance. So I, I think we go back to them and say, here's what you need to do. And what you need to do is be sure you've provided us this, this information we need in order to be able to, uh, consider exemption.
What they're asking for is before you said that. Those taxes are before you can get that exemption, what they owe. The amount they owe is before you agreed to hold off taxing them.
I wonder why, if it was they, the next three years was 2014, 15, and 16. How come 2013 taxes weren't brought up to the council at that time where we could have abated them or done whatever we felt was appropriate?
They weren't, I, I can't remember the exact date when they became a 501(c)(3).
2011.
2011, right.
I believe from what my understanding is from the game club is they thought that that bill that was not paid 100% was also included and would not be.
Brought up again.
Brought up again. It wouldn't be carried over like this. But it's, it just keeps getting carried over and they can't seem to get any results out of speaking to the assessor or speaking to the treasurer themselves. So that's why, out of frustration, they came to the council because they believe since they've been a 501(c)(3) established by IRS since December, I believe it is, of 2011. Yes. And this tax bill was actually after that, that it should be abated.
But the council doesn't have authority to not tax them. That's what I'm trying to expose to you.
Well, at the time when Mr. Booth came before the council, he said they did.
No, he didn't. He said they, they had to prove, they had to bring proof that they should not be taxed. That's exactly what he said in that letter.
Well, the letter is in our packet.
We have the letter. They have the.
I'm referring to. The last paragraph, since the original vote of the council has expired, this was in May of 18, the assessor's office is seeking guidance as to whether they should add the club to the tax roll or continue the exemption. So that, that paragraph seemed to describe the state of play in 2018. And, and now we're being asked whatever this is.
But in the letter from Mr. Booth on May 10th, 2018, it also says they may be exempted by an act of general assembly, which I think the tax assessor is talking about. But then it says they may be exempted by formal action of the council of any city or town. So I, as I said originally, can this town, can this council just make a, a motion to exempt these taxes or abate these, their amount of taxes of? Well, the total principal is 33555 and the penalty is 32621. It's for a total of 66176. And I'd be happy to make that motion to exempt this.
I concur with Council Mataronis for continuing the sought submission by Mr. Booth some five years ago.
I mean, it's another social facility for a lot of people in this town to get together and use. It doesn't cost them anything. So I don't know why we're hemming and hawing over $600 tax.
So would you restate your motion? If I'm not being.
I'd like to exempt 66176 taxes due by Little Compton Game Club, of which the total principal due is 33555 and the total penalty due is 32621 for the year 2013. So there'd be no taxes due by the game club in the year 2015.
Is there a second?
He can't second, he's part of.
Is there a second? I will second the motion. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Paul, just for clarification, are you?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, thank you.
Saying anything.
I will take for action a discussion with the assessor to ensure we don't continue to be at odds over our interpretation of how this is to be resolved. There's no, there's no reason that, that we should be looking back five years and solving something like this if we can, if we can reach a consensus as to how to proceed in the future so that we don't, we don't have these kinds of things before us that, that can be fixed in real time. The next item of business is a request from the East Bay Community Action Program for fiscal '24 budget funding received in January. Be emailed to the town clerk and administrator, but not included in a prior agenda. The amount of that East Bay Community Action Program request was $500. Is there a motion to approve this and then to consider it in company with all the other?
So we'll second.
Motions made and seconded to do that, to approve this request and to consider it as part of our budget discussion. Any, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is a request from the Wellness Center to request the council consider adding budget funding to be used to help support the Little Compton Food Bank in the amount of $10,000.
I'm happy to make this motion for consideration on the 27th.
Second.
The motion is made and seconded to consider this, or to add this to the budget for consideration on the 27th. Is there any further discussion? Yes?
I just have a question. Have they applied for grants for this or for any monies that these people are asking for?
Is there anyone from the Wellness Center that's here to speak to that?
I'm on their board. I can confirm that grants have been applied for, for the food bank directly. They, the food bank and the Wellness Center have done some delineating their functions from each other. And there has been applications and there's future ones coming.
And there's what?
Future ones coming.
One of the confusions here is that we have the Wellness Center asking for a, a grant of $10,000 and the food bank for, to whom they attribute it is also asking for a grant of $5,200. But we can sort that out in our discussions of the, of the budget, I think. Did I take?
No, not yet.
Not yet. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is a request, an update from the housing trust. This has a couple of parts. And I'll ask that the chair who's here with us would amplify anything that I've not stated in the manner in which they'd like it considered. It's an update on the status of the housing trust. It's an update on the status of the Housing Trust, along with a request to support an increase to $20,000 for the article in the FY '24 warrant. I'll just pause there. I believe the article they're speaking of is the article that defines for boards and commissions how much we're going to offer to each of those boards and commissions, in this case, the Housing Trust. So that would increase from $1,000 to $20,000 in the FY '24 one. Then a request for the council to vote to accept an agreement for the purchase of 184 Colebrook Road by the Housing Trust as an affordable housing opportunity for Rhode Island Housing, owner of the property, and to acknowledge that a townwide vote at the FTM is not necessary for this transaction. And that has a lot of words and is several phrases long. I'd be grateful for a bit of clarification, sir.
Sure thing, Bob. So my name is Patrick Bowen, resident of the House of the Housing Trust. I'd prefer to go to item B if we could initially.
Yes, please.
184 Colebrook Road. I don't know if anyone here is familiar with it. It's just on the right after you pass Lightnings Place. It is a house that has been abandoned for more than a year now. It was foreclosed. Rhode Island Housing holds the title to this property. Housing Trust has been in touch with Rhode Island Housing. They would like to see it maintained as an affordable unit in perpetuity for the town. We voted and entered into negotiations for the purpose of purchasing that, and we have come to an agreement. So for a purchase price of $175,000, we are intending to undertake the purchase and rehabilitation of this property as an affordable unit in perpetuity for the town.
Is there any opportunity for it to have more than one family live there?
So that has been among the subjects discussed at our meetings. And I would say at this point in time, there is nothing that's definite in that regard. I think based upon its present use as a single-family dwelling,
Yeah.
Two-bedroom septic system, our initial intention, I think, is to leave it as such. But I would say that when we look at this from a Housing Trust perspective, it's acquisition initially, given the opportunity that exists, and then, not secondarily, but afterward, the specifics of planning. And based upon the visibility of this particular location, as well as this being a relatively new undertaking, we all acknowledge the importance of doing this well and doing it with the input of members of the town. So to your question, I think most of the discussion we've had has been as keeping it as a single-family dwelling. We have had input from one local building contractor in particular willing to donate his time and architectural plans. So we have a tremendous amount of excitement and enthusiasm for this.
Okay. So you said $175,000. Is there a breakdown on where that's going to come from?
Presently, the Little Compton Housing Trust, thanks to some of the counselors here, an appropriation starting in 2018 from building permit fees. We do have that funding in our account.
Oh, you do?
We do.
You're looking for another $50,000?
Say that one more time.
Looking for another $50,000?
So that was item number A, which I would revert back to. But you should have in your possession a letter from our secretary, Isabel Tia. And at our last meeting, we voted for two funding mechanisms. The first would be an annual appropriation. So as Bob noted in the past, it has varied from $1,000 to $3,000, and when not used, reverts back to the general fund. In this particular case, because we are looking at this project, the budget request of $20,000 was specifically for administrative assistance. A second item, a stroke to be placed on the warrant for the voters of the town, wasn't the amount of $50,000 specific for this project so that it might be used as matching funds for available grants. So though not shown here on this agenda, in fact, it was intended to be a $20,000 annual appropriation with a $50,000 request.
And the $50,000 is attributed in the secretary's letter as being for the Colebrook project?
That's correct. At present, the discussion that we've had on the Housing Trust, based upon touring the existing building, has been that its present condition is not really worth trying to rehab. So unfortunately, it would appear as though the best course of action might be to remove the building and build a new building in its place.
So just to circle back and be clear, the $175 is the cost for acquisition of the property. The 50 is to turn it into a livable or to begin to turn it into a livable space.
That's right. The 50 would be to access matching grants that are available
Yeah.
As well as to use it for perhaps the demolition of the existing structure. There are a couple of other members here tonight, and I don't want to take the floor if there's anything that anyone else would like to add. And certainly, I'm available to ask or answer any questions that might
We're happy to hear from others if you'd like.
In perpetuity means that if the owner, are they considered owners?
So it would be the Little Compton Housing Trust that takes ownership of the property.
And so if there's a mortgage on the place, how does the bank, you know, find itself?
So it's Rhode Island Housing which holds that mortgage.
I see. Okay.
And I think that that property was foreclosed twice, if I'm not mistaken. So it's sort of a sad case in need of an upgrade.
So just to ask a question to be a little bit selfish for the town itself.
Sure.
Can this be for a town resident? Or is that, if you take state money, does anybody who qualifies in the state can apply for it? And I'm not against anyone. It's just
You would not be the first to ask that question. And I'm not standing here as an expert, only as a volunteer on the town board who's spent a bit of time talking about affordable housing. No. Because we would accept state and federal monies, the short answer is it would have to be available to all comers. Having said that, another organization locally, Church Community Housing, based in Newport, does have a prequalification process whereby after individuals take part in an educational format, their name is then placed on a list. There are other properties on Colebrook Road, actually, which Church Community Housing has developed, typically using the model where they would buy and hold the land and then come qualifying person or
99-year lease or whatever.
That's it. They would build a house. So effectively, from an affordability standpoint, you take the land out of the transaction.
Amy Mooney, I love that we've had the pleasure to meet you. I worked in the homeless and housing field for 12 years prior to joining the community center over here, and I can speak from experience, and some months upon time may have considered me expert level. Housing authorities can give priority preferences. So for example, Pawtucket Housing Authority, if you're a resident of Pawtucket, if you're homeless in Pawtucket, if you're a veteran of Pawtucket, you get points and move up lists quicker. So I think it's something that should be explored if that's what we're interested in helping folks who are within our
It's just, you know, a senior or a young family or a kid that's from town and that they want to stay in town, they want to stay in the school system, they want to stay with all their friends. I'd hate to see them get bumped because they were a percentage a little bit too higher than someone who more qualifies from out of town.
Yeah.
And again, it's not against anyone who's from out of town. It's just we're trying to keep our families here.
I think it's something worth exploring.
You know, we got an opening on the House.
We'll put you right now. We're going to put you right now.
My other question too, Amy. What is the income threshold for eligibility?
Susan, can I defer to you on that one?
Yes, well, hi, Susan Goddington, also on the table. I think that the Housing Trust hasn't actually put together a program to target who this house would go to. But in general, depending on the program that you apply for, that restricts what the income level would be for a family to live there. And I think, you know, it'd probably be somewhere in the range of if you're 80 to 100% median, $75,000 to $80,000 in income would be the maximum.
And just for the record, this is affordable housing. This isn't low-income housing. This isn't housing for those who can afford it. This is affordable housing.
That's right.
Just so people, anybody's got any anxiety about where this ends up.
So that means you pay 30% of your income to
I want to say a family of four was somewhere in the 50s or 60,000. That was the number that was bounced around, but that was a few years ago. I'm sure that's going up.
Yeah. So I just want to ask a question about what the actual request is right now. And because I heard a couple of things going on. But you are here to request that the council basically approve the purchase agreement that you're And the reason, I'll go back, the reason you can do that, make that request, is partly, I believe, because the charter was amended to exempt the trust as it previously was required to do
To go to town meeting for any real estate transaction.
So we amended the charter last November with language that, to me, leaves a little room for interpretation, but it essentially gives the town council the authority to waive that requirement. As I read it, you could require them to go to town meeting, but you also have the opportunity to waive the requirement that they go to the town meeting for the purchase. The thing that confuses me as I listen to this conversation is a discussion of an additional $50,000 appropriation. So there's going to be a separate article for that?
That was the intention, that there would be a stroke in the warrant for the townspeople to vote on $50,000 specific to this project.
So that creates sort of a conundrum because you're actually going to the town meeting for approval for the funds to execute the project.
Well, should this council vote down our ability to purchase this tonight, then it would be a moot point. But should this council then vote to approve or accept our purchase, then that $50,000 would be a further endorsement of members of the town toward this project, I might suggest.
Happy to make the motion, accept an agreement to purchase of 184 Colebrook Road by the Little Compton Housing Trust.
What was the amount?
$175,000. Is that what you're talking about? Allow you to go forward with this with $175,000 that you already have in your Housing Trust in account?
That's correct.
I'll second that motion.
Also waiving a town financial meeting on this.
Right.
You don't have to go to the town financial meeting.
Right.
That's the question. Apparently, you're going to say they don't have to go to town meeting to approve the purchase, which they can execute next week.
Yeah.
But voters are still going to have to say about the extra $50,000.
Right. Exactly.
I hope we got your vote, Larry.
So we got it.
Let's also be clear that we should not refer to this. Semantics are important. This is not the $175,000 quote we have in our account. It's the 175, or more than that, actually, that's been set aside from building permit fees that's available for such a conversation as we're having.
The Housing Trust. The Housing Trust has the funds that the town
That's correct.
As appropriated for that reason.
Okay. So is the motion here
I believe he said it was to accept the purchase and sale agreement presented by the Housing Trust to use $175,000 existing in the Housing Trust funds to purchase 184 Colebrook Road.
And exempt them from going to the town meeting.
And exempt them from going from financial town meeting.
For this
For this purpose.
Yeah.
Now, you, we have not seen, nor do I propose that we need to see, but we have not seen the purchase and sales agreement.
I didn't say purchase and sales, by the way.
What did you say?
I just said accept an agreement.
So we have not as yet signed a purchase and sale agreement. We have made an offer which has been accepted. Among the contingencies in our accepted offer are approval by this body, approval by DEM, wetlands, markings.
I can pull it up and read.
Yeah, survey.
Well, certainly, when you do get a purchase and sale agreement, we would like to solicit to take a look at it.
Absolutely, Susan.
We can do that. We also, we have retained a local real estate attorney, Ray Holland,
Oh, okay.
Who is representing the Housing Trust pro bono. So Susan and I had met with him before we made our offer, and we do have a copy of a purchase and sale agreement that was drafted by Rhode Island Housing under review right now with Mr. Holland.
Okay.
I can read the additional provisions if you'd like, which were all of our contingencies before we sign it.
No.
Yeah, I don't
I don't, yeah.
Satisfied my question fundamentally, which is, do we have in hand a purchase and sales agreement that we are considering? The answer to that is no, it's not physically present, but we are giving authority to execute such a document based on your description of it.
If the contingencies were, we need to have a wetland mapping conducted because the property does abut the Simmons Mill Pond. Out of the 1.5 acres, a lot of it is wetlands, and we do know there has been recent changes to DEM laws
Yes, there have.
As of June 1st. So we know that the minute we apply to raise this structure, we'll be subject to new laws within DEM, especially with the wetlands issue. So that $50,000 would help us pay for the consultant that will help us with the application for DEM and a lot of the other engineering and design that will have to go into this property before we remove a single
Right now, we're just approving the purchase and sale. We're not approving the extra money. We're approving the purchase and sales so you can go forward and so you can move forward.
That's correct.
Before that goes forward, you're going to have to make sure that, I'm not sure what there is, if there's one of the new septic systems in there? There is.
There is, yeah. The septic system has been upgraded.
Okay.
We've also had the well tested. It has a lower vulnerability as well.
I had to build two of those things.
So we do know we have a valid well on the property as well.
Okay.
Just for clarification, hearing all of this discussion, does it make more sense, Patrick and Gary, to say that you accept a proposal from the Little Compton Housing Trust to enter into a purchase and sale agreement using $175,000 existing in existing Housing Trust funds for the purchase of 184 Colebrook Road and to exempt them from having to go to town, financial town meeting for this purchase?
That sounds like a motion I would make.
I think that was your motion, wasn't it? Can I, can I
I'll second it.
I'll just throw a little mud can juice, and it's me being anal compulsive, up to 175, because if someone, if they come back and say, hey, we had to change our, we want 150, now you're stuck. You can only go 175. You're stuck at that number. I just would rather give you the flexibility.
Okay. So he said up to.
Yeah, so that's the only change.
I'm going to make another motion since I'm doing so well.
We should vote on this.
Go ahead. All in favor?
So the motion that has been made is as read by the clerk, as modified by the vice, who says it's up to 175. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to put on the, for the 27th, for an appropriation of $50,000, throw it down for the Little Compton Housing Trust for the purchase of 184 Colebrook Road.
Now, we have to put the $20,000 on there for discussion also.
I'm going to make that motion next.
Is that how you want to phrase it for the purchase, or do you want to go towards supporting restoration?
Supporting restoration because
Yeah, I was thinking supporting restoration.
If I may, the word restoration may have the connotation that
Didn't like restoration.
This building might be rehabilitated, and I would not want that
Okay.
To be the impression. So funding toward an affordable housing
Affordable house on the property.
Affordable housing unit, although to Mr. Mushin's point, it has not as yet been decided that it would be a singular dwelling unit.
All right.
So You called it pre-development work. Does that do the job or no? You said invested into the Housing Trust for the purpose of pre-development work at 184 Colebrook
Is As well as matching funds.
Yeah, or you could simply say development of the property. That covers it all.
So to consider placing on the February 27th, special meeting of the council to review a fiscal year '24 appropriation of $50,000 to be used by the Little Compton Housing Trust in support of creation or development of affordable housing on 184 Colbrook Road.
There you go.
Second.
That's the motion made by Mr. McHugh.
I did.
Seconded by Mr. Dolvesky. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So I'm going to make another motion. If anybody wants to help me with this one, I wasn't happy to. I'm going to make a motion to, for the 27th of our special meeting, to increase the request to $20,000 from the article for the Little Compton Housing Trust to $20,000 for the FY24 warrant.
Could you put that down, discussion to increase to 20,000?
Yes, yes.
So that would be discussion to increase. Second.
The motion is made and seconded to put a, to add to the agenda for the workshop consideration of.
Increasing the Little Compton Housing Trust under the boards and commissions from 1,000 to 20,000.
Put a discussion.
Discussion. That's what you're discussing and considering.
Any further discussion on the motion? Motion then is ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you at the ribbon cutting.
Thank you, Patrick.
On that last one, who said to the second? Was it Gary again? Who seconded?
Pick one.
I'd like to know who.
I think I said.
I think Gary did.
I think you did too, but I just, I was writing at the same time, so.
The next item of business is new business seven, which is to consider a request from the town administrator to temporarily appoint a person to cover the absence of the assessor's office clerk.
Oh, are you waiting for me to?
No, I'm waiting for a motion.
Also moved. Second.
Is there discussion?
I just, I'm just wondering what's going on.
The assistant assessor.
Current tax assessor clerk is taking an urgent leave of six to eight weeks. The assessor has requested assistance for the duration of the absence. We basically, we are a one-deep organization. When one person is not present, it typically requires replacement. We aren't able to assign that to another person. So in this particular case, we need a clerk in the assessor's office, and we don't have one, so we need to find one.
So what's Tony's discussion on?
That's my recommendation, you know, at the request of the tax assessor. And obviously, I, you know, I'm cautious as to the language being used. I use urgent leave rather than the purpose of it.
I'm over the way I allow you to go forward with that.
What we did is now time to second.
You did.
Second.
The motion is made and seconded to approve the request. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question of how this is going to be happening. Is it going to go out to advertisement? Is there another method that you have planned?
At this point, there may be. At least, we have one individual who assisted us previously in the absence of Denise, and if she's available, we'd certainly like to bring her back.
Just, all I'm thinking is the union body, and just, are they going to have a heartburn if you're bringing somebody in without offering it to them first? But it's a temporary position.
Temporary work can be done, but you have to follow the salary and benefit structure that you have voted already by the council for salary. So I just throw that out there, that it needs to be. Follow that.
Okay. Made and seconded, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next sitting is Board of Licensed Commissioners, a request from the Game Club for a Class F1 one-day retail beverage license.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Communications, a copy of a resolution adopted by the Warren Town Council supporting House Bill 5309, which would amend a specific Rhode Island general law to allow a primary election, stand by, to be held on the Wednesday following Tuesday after Labor Day on the years where the eighth Tuesday follows the holiday. If you don't understand that, you need to look at the general law.
Place on file.
But, no, no, wait, wait.
No. I ask you to support this place.
This is serious business. This costs money. This takes money from the Housing Trust and spends it, for example, on doing something that.
I pull my motion to place on the file, and I make a motion to support.
Second.
Could I ask that you make the motion that council, Little Compton Town Council craft a resolution and that I sign it to do just what this said?
So moved.
And seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just long, don't throw that math at me again.
Second, a request received from Nora Kane Daly, who is the post-prom committee chair for Portsmouth High School, asking the town to offer a donation toward the post-prom party.
What do we usually give?
We gave 100 last year. I would suggest we give 200 this year.
Second.
That's, I move that we give 200.
Caught you on that one.
No, I wasn't being caught. I'm waiting for you all to make the motions, but if none of you will do it, I'll do it.
Ooh, well, it's already been made and seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Request from Stay-at-Home Little Compton for budget funding and FY24 in the amount of $10,900.
Motion to put this in our budget request.
Budget request for Monday the 27th.
Second.
For discussion.
The motion is made and seconded to place this item in discussion on the workshop, the budget workshop on February 27th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And Monday's not just a workshop, it's an actual meeting so you can vote, because you can't vote in workshops.
Sure.
Just so you're all clear.
I knew that. So she's telling you, stop calling it a workshop. Is that what you said?
Yes. I can't imagine why I called it a workshop. It's a meeting, and I'll stop calling it a workshop. Thank you. A request from Lavinia Gadsden on behalf of the Little Compton Garden Club to set up a table to sell and distribute resold tickets at Veterans Field on June 17th for a garden tour being held the same day.
Happy to make that motion.
As long as it's not being utilized by somebody else, I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded, as long as it's not being used by somebody else. Is that your motion then?
Yes.
Motion then is to refute the request as long as it's not already spoken for. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Request received from Megan Gonzalez for the Commons North Side to be closed from 12 to 4:00 p.m. on June 3rd for the annual pride celebration and to additionally be allowed to retain one food ice cream truck for the event.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Request from United Congressional Church to use Town Landing April 9th for the Easter sunrise service.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Request from Patrick Bowen for the council to oppose House Bill 5037, which would restrict aquaculture farms in the entirety of the Secana River and force them a minimum of 1,000 feet from mean high tide.
I'd like to support Patrick Bowen's request to oppose this bill, make a resolution, send it up to the General Assembly.
I'll second that.
The motion is made and seconded to craft a resolution to be sent to the General Assembly in opposition to Rhode Island House Bill 5037. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, I have some further discussion. I see the Bowens are here, and I have to apologize, I haven't been following your story for the three years that you've been entangled in it. And it's come to my attention, it's been quite a grind for you guys. I thought it was taken care of, you know, there's a lot of other things going on, right? But, you know, John Edwards, I guess, over in Tiverton has a bill in committee right now. I think you guys testified last week. It's an 11-member committee on whether to pass this bill or not. And I guess the bill was for all of Rhode Island, and he amended it to Secana River, and then amended it again, just for Sepulvede, from what I read online, and I believe what I read online. So it seems to me that you've got all your, you went to all the meetings you had to go to, you got, you're still stuck at CRMC for a decision. Your aquaculture application is still sitting there after three years. I don't know why it's still sitting there. I find that odd. Maybe you can, you know, tell us, I mean, do you have a picture of what an oyster farm looks like or what your oyster farm would look like? Because from what I've been reading is, the articles tell me that the people over there at Sepulvede that live over there on the water, they're saying that it's going to lessen their value of their homes, and the residents over there aren't going to go on their kayaks anymore or be tourists over there. And they pay high property taxes over there in Tiverton. And I know if I someday had a house on the water and had to pay high property taxes, you know, I wouldn't want to see anything out there. But, so I'm curious to see what it looks like. What does it look like?
So what we have proposed, and shellfish farming can take many different modes, different ways to farm shellfish, right? One popular way is floating gear, where if you're going over the Jamestown Bridge, you look to the north, you'd see Roan Point off of which is a significant amount of floating gear. Also in Dutch Harbor in Jamestown, a lot of floating gear. On our particular site, we determined that we didn't want to have anything visible. So everything that we have proposed is under the water, and the only visible markings will be four corner buoys. So to be clear, House Bill 85037, it's not about us, except that it's about us. And Representative Edwards, having received several letters from constituents in the Sepulvede area, took it upon himself after the Tiverton Town Council voted to introduce this legislation. It died in committee in the last legislative session. He revived it again. And it should be noted that Senator DePaolo has Senate bills, yeah, ready to go. Now.
Already introduced.
I find it astonishing that Mr. Edwards and Mr. DePaolo, frankly, would have the hubris to suggest such a restriction without first having a fair hearing vocally in any of those communities, which would be, you know, impacted by this, up and down the Secana River. So.
You should not be hearing about this from us.
Not at all.
Not at all. About this from a legislator.
So, you know, noteworthy here too is that the purpose of zoning rules in both towns of Tiverton and Little Compton specifically state the purpose of zoning is to encourage, among other things, agriculture, including aquaculture.
And to promote.
To promote. So clearly, what this is doing is taking farms and putting them in a place where they're going to be more in danger of interfering with commercial and recreational boating and fishing. It would eliminate small farms in favor of larger industrialized ones, and it's likely going to result in fewer aquaculture farms.
And this is ignoring the water quality improves greatly around these bivalves, so they filter the water and clean the water.
Environmental services for oysters, for shellfish farms are far more realized when they're placed in proximity to nutrient-loading areas such as an estuary. If you were to shift them 1,000 feet offshore, they'd be far less efficient at nutrient remediation than they would if they were in proximity to the.
This just strikes me like people who move in next to a farm and think the beautiful view, and then they realize what's on the ground in the farm, and they say, well, I don't want to see it. We support, I mean, I'm not speaking for the council, I just, but we support you.
I am pleased to write the resolution for your consideration, and I appreciate your help in editing it.
I just asked just a couple more. Why did you guys pick that spot?
Its location, contrary to what you hear about it being adjacent to a public area, we're on the other side of a creek which is rarely crossed, but its location is extremely nutrient-rich, and it's dynamic. The tidal flow is such that it would be great for farming oysters, we believe. We started in the early 1980s for an oyster farmer right here in Little Compton on the creek.
Patrick, are there any other oyster farms in Tiverton?
There is one in Tiverton, and there is one in Little Compton. You know, statewide, I think there's about 84 farms, and Mr. Edwards' bill, if enacted as initially written, would eliminate all but four. Eighty of those farms in this state are within 1,000 feet of a shoreline.
You know what bothered me when I did read something, and tell me if I'm wrong, it was a quote by Mr. Edwards, and he said, you know, the Bowen brothers are not from Tiverton, they're not Tiverton residents. They're people from out of town, and they do not seem to have the same respect for the area. You know, so when I read that, you know, the last thing that I think of when I think of a Bowen is not having respect. I've only known, you know, the Bowens for 50 years, so I don't have much experience. But I think Mr. Edwards may have misspoke. I don't know if he's ever spoke with you or your brother, and I'm sure if he did, he realized that you guys are, have respect, respectful of people and the environment. So, you know, I found that, you know, I just couldn't believe I read that. The other oyster farm in Tiverton, is your oyster farm going to be more impactful than his? Is it the same? Is it different? Is this other person a Tivertonian, or is he respectful? I mean, I don't.
Existing farm in Tiverton is about three acres. It uses a system of cages, each of which has its own buoy. So when viewed from the water or landward, you would see a series of buoys.
It's 200 feet from the shore as well.
It's 200 feet. How far would yours be?
So ours would be about 300 feet from shore.
So it would be less impactful then?
Well, it's entirely below the water. From the first meeting we had with the Tiverton Harbor Commission, we made it clear that it will not prevent people from fishing. It will not prevent people from kayaking, and what we said was, we want to talk to kayakers because we want to sell oysters.
Yeah, it doesn't make much sense.
He's an ambassador for aquaculture.
What's the one that's off of Sea Spray down?
Peter Melanson. Secana Oyster Company, I think.
So if you go down.
That's 1,000 feet as well.
Yeah. If you go down a Sea Spray way, you look out there, you'll see what, now those are single buoys on those.
That's correct. Similar to the situation where you have a cage and a buoy on each.
And he's been there for over 30 years.
So if someone's got some big house and they're looking out, having their latte, looking at the water, they're just going to see a few buoys out there?
Four corner buoys, and maybe us working.
And that's going to drop the property values of their house?
University of Rhode Island did a study and proved that proximity to oyster farms does not affect property values.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on, guys. I really, I mean, for three years you've been going through this. I mean, I don't know if it's political up there or what's going on.
Rhode Island.
But it doesn't seem right, and I'm happy to help with the resolution.
We're not giving up, and we're waiting for our CRMC hearing, but as Pat said, it's about us, but it's not about us. It's bigger than us. It would have affected Portsmouth, Middletown, Little Compton, and Newport, and I don't think any of the towns were consulted.
And where does it end? One of the uniquely Rhode Island fisheries is the trap fishery, as highlighted in this week's Secana Times, that it is a dying industry. But if one were to look on charts and see the numbers of locations that are allocated for trap fishing, it's quite significant, and many of those are within.
One is just off Sepulvede, close to proximity to the shore.
So, you know, the use of the public trust doctrine based upon the round constitution, which allows the residents of this state to access the ocean, includes not just recreational use, but also commercial use. And when we talk about food security and local food and local farms, you need to think think about aquaculture in that realm as well. But your support is very much appreciated.
So in our resolution, we're gonna send that to Magar and DePalma?
Absolutely. Ready to vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Consent calendar.
Motion to place consent calendar on file unless anybody wants to pull anything for discussion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Payment of bill.
Motion to pay the bill.
Just got a question on the bills real quick. I, I see.
Second?
Second.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Real quick, valve core heating I see was seven times. Is that because of the cold snap?
It has, they actually addressed four different buildings. It was the Public Safety, Town Hall, Grange, and the, the garage, the, the DPW Works Garage. The Grange specifically was because of the cold spell. We had a problem there where a pipe burst, and there was issues because of the wind blowing right through the doors there. I happened to come in on Saturday morning when they were working there, and it was awful. And you could tell that there were some major issues. That's how.
And the other buildings?
The other buildings was mainly maintenance. Well, the Town Hall, we had to have them come back because there were some issues with the valve, not the valve, the, I can't recall now, but there was a couple of issues at the Town Hall. Eventually, we were able to.
Wasn't that a boiler blower?
Real quickly, T. Mizuzi Road Paving Project, that's kinda jumped out at me for.
Myosi.
936.
Yes, Myosi was the company that actually did the paving of Maple Avenue. And then they had to come back to do additional work because there was an issue with a pipe that had collapsed under a driveway. Had to remove the pipe, clear the area, and also the drainage. So there was a $12,000 job.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Before you do that, please, you have a bill that's listed in there which is reimbursing someone for hours worked in the assessor's office, which is not a rate per hour that meets your salary and benefits. And I do have a problem with it. So I ask that you maybe empower the administrator to take care of that separate from the list and not pay the full, it's my opinion, it should not be paid in the full amount because it's an, an amount that exceeds what you advise.
Is there a motion to remand the bill for the assessor's temporary person payment to the administrator for his consideration? Yeah, may I just get the, so moved. Is there a second? No second.
Okay.
Yes.
That is the amount that was voted on last time, when the person replaced me. Oh, okay. So that is the amount that was voted on.
Thank you. Any further business for the council?